This conference will now be recorded.
Very good.
Can you hear that Scott? Okay, I'd like to call the work session into session for August 15th, 2022 at 7:35 PM.
Okay, so you guys were having a work session on the council priorities. Really, there's two things that we have to do. We need to gather whatever ideas have a consensus of council that are new projects or additional related to other projects. And then we will develop that list and then you guys will rate them. And then the average will become the order. So we thought since this meeting was short, it'd be a good time to bring up and have you guys discuss amongst yourselves or try and get people on your side for what your proposed new projects are. We wanted to give a little bit of thought provoking that whatever the new projects are, we currently have a lot of projects and they will have to be funded either in what we have in the budget this year or be known that they're going to be on hold until next fiscal year when we can fund them. So just kind of keep that in mind as we're adding things.
The intention wasn't, well, I've lived here for 20 years and I've always wanted to see a water slide at the pool. It's not your dream projects. It's like something was more relevant to what's going on in the city now or if staffs forgot something or.
There's extra.
That we talked about two years ago and you're like, hey, whatever happened to that? Maybe now's the time for that or a thing to these or.
Yeah.
The water slide? We had one.
Oh, the soap.
No, she was using that as an example. It's not the, we're hoping it's not each counselor putting their pet rock on the list, but councils as a whole saying this is worthwhile to go on the list and deciding what projects are in addition to what we already have going on. So we thought you guys could talk amongst yourselves and come to consensus on what, if anything, should be added to the priorities list.
Counselors just said their individual things and then they end up on the list to be ranked and other counselors are surprised by them. Why is this on there? They haven't even discussed it.
Yeah.
Projects, so.
So we wanted it to be stuff you all kind of came to agreement on.
Okay, well, I see Webb's got a list. We'll read them. Anybody else? I got a couple of things. They're kind of long-term pie in the sky stuff, but maybe you got some smaller things that are doable.
Some of these are things that we kind of talked about and I also view this list as kind of being a, and if we agree as a council, yes, we want to proceed forward. They need to, you know, at least keep on the list as a placeholder.
Yeah, they could even have the 23, 24 date on them if they're textbook or something.
Hopefully some of these will get some grant funding to help. Couple of those should, they're state monies.
So can you read yours so I can put them down here on the proposed?
So I had the, uh, the lake boat ramp we need to put in.
So many bands can launch stuff too.
Yeah, so we can actually get in and out of the lake. We've also discussed down at Anderson Park, putting in an official boat ramp down there. Wintertime fishermen have a place they've been using it, but it turns into a mud pit and it's, you know, I mean.
They wouldn't use somewhere else this year.
Well.
So you're, the one you're proposing is the old, the historic one that's behind the shed at Sevens Bridge?
I think I'm down at the, at the Confluence.
But how are we gonna?
Behind the host is because of our one-way traffic, it's really makes it harder to back in there now. It's not gunned or you're coming in this way and you gotta turn the corner back around this way.
So I don't know how much we can actually, just to put this out there, actually do at the Confluence as far as a project, because I don't know that they're going to let us mess with anything. That is all repairian. Guys lugging their boat over it and shoving it in, well, that, that works within the waterway, but us putting some sort of.
But that's right there where it's open, been used, open, that's where all the pedestrian traffic is going down the Confluence.
I know, I'm just saying as far as like a construction project or putting some sort of concrete there in the repairian, I think they're going to be a pushback. They were looking at fixing the historic one behind the camp, old Campos site and putting runners in there. And then maybe.
Regardless.
Yeah, I got it. I got it.
That's where Parks Committee.
Yes.
Staff needs.
I just don't want him to, everyone to fall in love with the Confluence idea, only to have the state go.
I'll bet up to the parks three, four years ago and they didn't want to do anything on it, obviously. Maybe they can try again.
I have Anderson boat ramp, wherever it is.
Yeah, and it should be, that's been the historical. Still addition and support is Anderson. I wanted to kind of memorialize this sidewalk, I call it the master plan that we're kind of working on right now. It's an internal and I'm not talking about bringing outside consulting and stuff, but through the Public Works Committee and stuff, but trying to develop our own little master plan of how we're going to use these fee and move monies or where we want to build sidewalks, where it makes sense. I mean, that whole nine yards, fleshing that out and, and having a map and so, and there, you know, I keep saying more talk about funding for pathways and it's in this infrastructure bill, so.
If we had, if we had projects identified.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I know CZ Trail people were talking the other day of Latham. If, if it would have been in our street master plan for a sidewalk down, um, going out Pebble Creek Road.
Okay.
There would have, he, there was a grant we could have went for or and, and from the bridge up, hook up to the lake. We could have got monies to done that, but since it's not, he said that was one of the thing, it has to be in your transportation master plan. It wasn't.
So master plan was done before they even talked about the CZ Trail probably.
Oh, yeah. So, you know, and then I don't know if we do this and then if that's something we incorporate into our transportation master plan.
Yeah, we just do an update to it.
Yeah.
We did that in 2012.
So, I mean, just, um, the other thing that I had, we've been talking about quite a bit is the INI. I kind of, I would kind of hope or envision we'd kind of create kind of a master plan again internally of mapping, we've got all the data now that's coming in logically, looking at it, saying this is our plan, how we plan to attack this.
Is that separate from the Corey Hill INI that's on the list?
Yeah, because it'd be the entire city. I have a gut feeling that the INI issue is something we've been neglecting financially, kind of like your meter placement program, that's basically building rates now. We probably should have been building some, you know, having some money in our budget every year to be tackling that or if we can get funding, um, which is again, you know, we identify what the problem is, where and how we're going to tackle it, then we will figure out how we're going to fund it.
Did he finish that vacuum testing?
They did, I pushed, uh, we don't have the final report because there were some missing things in the report that I asked them to redo.
When do you think we'll see that?
When they find, when they finally put it in, uh, markers on all the holes. They left a few of them unknown and didn't give me a rating, so I can't color code them. So I asked them to go back through their thing, using the pictures and their test results and everything and fill it, finish that. Because the way they presented it to us, those missing ones don't help us. The missing category.
Did he talk to you about, what he talked to me about out in the street about cameras that run up the pipes and give you a lot more detail on leaks?
No.
Oh. I guess he does that work too, so.
And I think, I mean, and that's probably something in the future, but I think we've got enough, we've got enough low hanging fruit here of what we've collected so far that we can probably spend quite a bit of our money to buy us some time here and to cancel or ask this point, probably concentrate on Corey Hill there originally at the start to try to alleviate this problem.
Well, we found, we found one line that was just tied directly in, right? We gotta deal with that.
When you say one line, you mean down spout?
A storm. That was tied into the sewer up there.
No. I don't think there's storm lines tied into the sewer. Could be a catch.
Like a storm.
Could be a catch basin.
Oh, I thought you said we found something up there that was tied in somewhere up there.
Well, no, we know that there's like the manhole on third is in a puddle and that they've knocked a hole in the side of it. So anytime it's a puddle, it's a storm catch basin. And then the one, we have the one, yeah, so there's a whole bunch of factors like that that are contributing to the overrun of it in those flash kind of events. But yeah, you, you want to look at the whole big ugly and break it down and what can we do in the next five years and how are we going to do it?
Right, we're gonna have to, just like our street plan, we'll start doing an INI master, you know, master plan.
Yeah, for the future us, what is the plans?
The dollars and how we're going to fund it.
Okay.
Other one I was thinking about in the shower where I came down here, that's where I do my best thinking. Backwood Rejustice Review, we have.
Read that with them?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know if it's a.
I don't know if the priority list or this is, we just, or do we need it to prompt us to make sure we do it or?
Well.
Or I think we're still maybe in the.
Our part is really the collection.
Right.
The incidences, right? And the police tallying that, keeping track of that. The community part is really a festival or something about inclusivity or the different cultures that exist in Renonia from the logger to the intel person to the, you know, all different face, all different races and doing some sort of thing around food they talked about. But that's really the community driving that rather than city and staff.
The document we all signed on to said the city was going to put out a report quarterly. The city was going to.
I don't think it said quarterly because we didn't even think it would have results for like a year. Yeah.
About the city.
Think we were supposed to do yearly.
Yeah, and we can pull that data. I mean, that'd be, yeah, I think.
There again, that's where you guys can.
Yeah, I don't know that it.
If we be on the list or.
I wouldn't put it on the list. I would just put it in and we'll, I'll reach out to that side and we'll see if maybe we can have a, um, meeting again and discuss with police, what have they found?
Right.
Because I know of an incident that just happened, uh, not racially, but because the person was a trans kid. And the police were called and other kids were harassing and trying to start a fight with that person. And so I know there's an event, incidences.
Yeah. And that was one of our, we wanted to have metrics to measure whether, you know, this is continuing issue, getting better, getting worse.
Yeah.
So can that just be a staff action?
Yeah, I'm just putting it on to get back and get, get a group going.
This last one I got, probably same boat. I think it's just administrative. You and I have talked about it, but the lake weed control.
Yeah.
I think we want to move forward on.
So potentially. What I would do is I think I, what I would propose is taking the plan to parks just so that they're not surprised by it. Go to parks with the plan, say this is the product we want to use, this is how we want to do it.
I think we were talking allocating a grant towards it, something like that.
So, yeah, we can definitely take that to parks.
Those are basically operational issues for the cities. That's all I got.
Okay, so we got four on the proposed list. Who wants to add?
Um, I was wondering about the docks, that's separate from the lake ramp, right? I know it's kind of slightly in progress.
Yeah, they're not, they're not really a priority, so they're not really a priority project how I see this list, because this list is like not maintenance or upkeep. And those are really maintenance and upkeep. So pushing back on the guy from Tillamook to come out and visit us, the guy that can do the, that's the company that does that kind of repair in place.
Um, and then I know we've alluded many times to the future work we need to do on Title IX. What is the plan for that?
That's a Stephanie question.
She looks thrilled.
She's so thrilled to talk about it.
Well, we're not working on it.
Right.
Because I need direction from council to say, do you, are you satisfied with our planner? And if so, I will move forward with that project. If you are not, then we would reach out to another firm. They are, the firm that we are currently contracted with is not able to take on the UGB project anymore. So it has not had any progress in quite some time, like a long time.
Didn't we have some action items around that?
For the UGB?
And planning in general?
We did, but when they said they would no longer send a staff member out here, that's kind of where.
I mean, around that.
Yeah, so potentially staff would just be bringing you guys.
A proposal.
A proposal.
So what I wanted to propose was I had reached out to, actually she happened to call me or the firm did. And I started talking to her about something else and I was like, oh, interesting that you called because we're interested in your planning firm. And so what they proposed, I'd ask them about the UGB project and because it's such an in-depth project, what they would like to do is you will have to please, you know, fill our contract to do a official review and bid of that project to see what that would look like for us. So they have two different rates. One is your rate for just this project and one is a rate when you are contract planner for the city. Our current firm, which is MIG, they estimate the UGB project, which is already mostly done, would cost us an additional $75,000.
Professional services.
We already did most of it.
Yeah.
So at the staff level, it's not her, um, rate, but we are not pleased with their services.
Right.
I think we talked.
Out here, we are doing most of the low-level reviews ourselves. $75,000 is outrageous.
Yeah.
When we have already spent years on this project. I think I started with Matt. He started, I'm involved in like 2018.
Yeah.
And now I had to fight with them for over eight months to get them to get, talk to another planner in their firm to get us an estimate, get one of them to agree. And just so happened at the same, literally within the same two weeks, I'm badgering them and they're actually saying, I'll get it to you, I'll get it to you. This other firm told me. So I need direction because until I know what you guys, because you guys are the ones who authorized signing that contract, want to do, I don't want to waste any more time or money on projects because it's defeating.
Well, and because they're not coming out here to meet with the planning commission and.
Yeah, I think I think we're already waiting on a proposal, I guess, from staff.
Well, we asked them.
So I can bring them, if you are, guys are comfortable with the $2,000, it's, it's, we've saved that much in reviewing at staff level for planning applications.
Yeah.
We've saved that. If you guys are comfortable, which this has been probably February, so even if it goes up to $3,000, this, you know, everything's inflated now, I would like to do that contract and see what they think it will take, so.
So if you guys are okay, we'll bring that to your next meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Vote on to move forward, at least in the review.
You need to bring us a proposal, move into a new planning.
Yeah.
I just sent a letter and fire tomorrow.
Well, but the, you gotta almost have it be overlapping because it, the minute someone comes in and we don't know the answer and we don't have a planner to send them to, that's problematic.
I mean, we do have right now, I'm working on a variance request.
Yeah, so we have some of those things.
Have to do because there's Luba and all these other things that are. I can't, I mean, I could have been through enough of them, but probably.
So how much work do we have in the pipeline right now for besides UGB?
One, like, like actually being worked on?
Yeah, like, like you need them still.
Well, well, it could be transitioned, I mean.
Yeah, they could.
Universal.
So the old planner and the new planner can overlap on a house that's currently under construction inspections and all that or building reviews or whatever. We just don't want it to be dead time before the next one's starting because those ones in the dead time are going to be mad, not.
Is that three, four weeks ago, you said they wouldn't come up here anymore?
Yeah. Probably a month.
Before that.
No, when she, when we had our yellow meeting, it was softball season, so it had to been like March, April.
I know, I heard about it a month, month or so.
Yeah. I think that meeting with John, we were like, nope, we need them at least two days a month. And then they were like, well, let us discuss it. We were here before COVID, two days a month, so.
Was that their reason?
Well, just a lot of them are going to working from home. They're not, a lot of places aren't keeping the brick and mortar and they're just.
They don't have us anymore.
Yeah.
So I guess that'd be the kicker is can you do it for a reasonable price and be here once or twice a week, right?
A month. A month.
A month then.
Yeah.
That's all?
Yeah.
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 People don't show up to work anymore.
No, so we'll bring those two back to you guys at your next.
Sorry, you're having such frustration with that.
Okay, so then looking further out, does it make sense to put anything to do a Title IX on this list even though it's obviously dependent on us feeling settled with a planning firm? Or do we need to fully wait until that?
I would like planning firm decision to be on here.
But it's, no, because it's not going to stay.
No, but that's.
That's a staff thing.
My feeling is.
Okay, this list is projects that are long-term. If we bring them a proposal and they hire, why is it on this list?
It feels good to check things off, Chazette. I put the things I've already done for the day on the list.
See, I, I can't, I can't do, I got too many plates spinning. It can't be something that's going to be just once and done or this list isn't going to be very effective for projects. I'm happy to put it on a bring planning proposal to the next meeting.
Okay.
And on this action item list that I'm making for tonight.
I'm good with that.
Um, and the, and the one for UGB, because that one's just kind of an.
Kind of just normal business. I noticed the planning commission meeting's canceled. Has it been canceled all along?
Well, there's no reason to have a meeting if there's no decision to be made.
Right. You're right.
There's no decision, so.
You're not getting the service we need from them, so.
Well, it's just that the applications aren't there.
Yeah.
There's only been one meeting canceled due to the lack of a forum when there was business to be had. That's it.
Well, and then now it's vacations. There's some reasons that you don't have a forum, but it's like someone's on vacation. They only have three. So if you have any friends, get them to apply for the planning. We need four members.
Won't have friends anymore. So are we still dreaming of projects that add to the list? I think so.
Oh, I've got one more. Um, and so I kind of, I had talked with Chazette a little bit about this today, but I think, personally, I'm concerned long-term about our water, um, contingencies, I guess. So, um, there's a water master plan that is very outdated and needs to be redone. The plan is to, we've already budgeted for that to happen this fiscal year. But I don't know if we want to put on the list, even though it'd be vague at this point because we don't know, but I, it would be nice to see that we are starting to think about moving in the directions of the things recommended by the plan, which it didn't, doesn't seem to me like the previous plan has really happened. We're not doing anything to move towards things like reservoirs or anything like that. And so that's a concern of mine.
Hells or water plant?
So 94, 97.
It was 94 and I think it was a 20-year plan.
Yeah.
So.
97.
That was in 97, the Sicconi one. That's the one I pulled today. I think it's 97. I think it was only four years after the other one or something, or three years after. Or maybe it was because of after the flood. What?
The plant, we're talking the plant?
No, water master plan. A plan of like.
I thought we were doing one.
We are.
Yeah.
So we are, but what I'm saying is I, to me, what I see, I'm sure some things happened, but the plan from 1994 was to start looking to have reservoirs and things like that. And now we're well past 20 years out of that plan and we haven't done any of those things. So we will have a new plan. It doesn't make sense to start doing things until we have the new plan, but it makes sense to me to say, okay, once we have the new plan, somewhere on this list, we are looking at how to implement some of those things. Just so, what's the point of having the plan if we're not gonna?
First, we're going to get the plan done.
Right, which is in the works.
Yeah.
But some of these things on this list are years out, so I don't know if, if we have the plan by the end of the fiscal year, do we start something? Do we?
We have Louisiana new stormwater plan on here.
Well, that's, I mean, that's really sewer.
I just wonder if we need to put it on the list and we can remind us, hey, where are we at with that?
Right.
So you're getting it.
Because I mean, we won't know exactly what it's going to be, but if there's something on the list that says, hey, coming out of the new plan, let's kind of game plan.
Yeah, and I could see.
Implementation.
Yeah.
I could see if we identify we need to have the Eastside Reservoir or wherever it's at. Having a long-term plan of how we're going to get.
I just don't want to see, oh, we did the plan, we're done. Like the plan is to move forward with, not just to.
Well, some of that too is setting ourselves up for success because it's, uh, we've seen this where if you have something that's what we're already doing on not in state, having that preliminary engineering that we can go, yes, we have a plan, yes, it's in our plan and here's the dollars we need. You know, if we had, say, that reservoir planned out, preliminary engineered and infrastructure money, there it is.
Okay.
That ties into the UGB also because he's incorporating the UGB into the water master plan. And so he's taking into account where our plan UGB is going to be, that it actually has to be followed through.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Kind of ties together.
So we got water master plan implementation, 23, 24.
Okay.
Okay.
I like it.
This is, that's on the proposed list that you're going to all agree or disagree on.
I felt we have a big enough list, I didn't need to add anymore.
We can't get through the first one. Go ahead, Don.
Oh, actually they've done a really good job of whittling it down.
It's moving, yeah.
Yes, a lot of this is big stuff that we're waiting on professional services.
Was this empty line meant to be empty?
It was, uh, the lake, it was just missing. It was the Louisiana Water Main upgrade. I didn't erase it before I collapsed it. So it cannot be something. There's an open spot.
29 on?
I didn't even put any numbers, so.
Yeah.
Okay, any others for your potential new projects? I think Donald was serious when he said he didn't bring any because he thinks we have enough.
Well, I had a couple of just pie in the sky wishlist stuff. I'd like to see maybe somebody have splash pad in one of the parks for the kids. I don't know if there's a great opportunity for that, but I don't even know what they cost, but. And then I did bring up full ADA access, but I heard that's been tabled, tossed around before at Dewey Pool. And then I got to looking at our welcome signs and I think I kind of agree with Mayor Hobart that it's not exactly top of the list, but it might be time to start thinking about maybe upgrading our welcome to Renonia sign, kind of down in the hole there and hard. our welcome to renowned sign, kind of down in the hole there and hard to get, kind of. I don't know, it's starting to wear. I don't know if it's due this year or next year, but maybe next three or four years, start thinking about something new and cool. A tire or something, maybe light it back up. Was that a city project?
No, none of them, none of the.
Yeah, those were all outside.
The community did those.
We've been updating our Omar signs around here lately. I'm just.
Well, we update all the ones that the owns, but the one by the lake was community driven. I know that was Shirley and Terry Schaumberg and Casey. And this one I want to say was somebody, Michael Snow did the painting, that it was a different group.
Maybe they just need a fresh up. I don't know. The one here by the lake is, is still pretty nice. It's just hard to see under the trees.
It is, yeah.
I wondered too, if we came up with a new plan, there are resources like the wood shop class at the school helping us on projects for my generators. So I wonder if it'd be like, if it was something that needed to be built or carved or something, we could probably get some volunteer help.
Yeah, I do. I'm still, the difficult part about those wood signs, because those are all carved in wood, um, is that they're really expensive when you have to fix them. So if we went to something, I would maybe not propose it's wood. Um, because I know that the Hawkins family wants to read, Hawkins, the wooden one. And it was like twelve hundred dollars because it's like split and they're gonna have to join it and all this stuff. And I was like, so. Take that into account.
That's got, that's one of the things you gotta be careful of these communities spurred projects that they, oh, here's a nice new shiny penny, but ten years down the road.
Yeah.
The ten thousand dollar bill.
Well, and that's the thing, if you're gonna go to a new sign, your best bet is something metal. Like, I don't know if you've ever driven through like gates and it's like layers of metal that form a picture, right? You could, it's like relief. It's like the trees are cut out in metal and they give depth, but something really robust with the amount of vandalism we have in this town lately and it seems to only be getting worse. Um, it'd be nice to have something you could just, it was sealed, so you could just go power wash it if they wanted to be a jerk or they want, you know, they got it. We had. They could, except that we already had somebody, what looks like either a BB gun or a bullet on the city hall sign. On one on each side, like where the edge is, it just took out like, and it's like a projectile because it goes right along the edge of the sign. So we painted it over, but those are that poly foam, so they're not going to be as robust as, they're that hard, whatever. They're not going to be as robust as metal or something. Just a thought. I want less stuff to fix.
Yeah.
We have to get permission to fix it since it's on our property?
Uh, this one? I don't know. I think it might be.
It's on Oregon Park.
Well, that weird little corner. I gotta look it up again to see how far it is off.
I'm looking at it.
Oh, you're on the map?
On this one.
So I can see it.
Millhouse sewer line replacement, isn't that accomplished?
Um, no, they're not connected. Our part's accomplished, but it's not done, done because they're not all connected. That's why I was.
More clear.
That's why I was leaving it on there so I don't let them not connect and.
It's kind of like crack ceiling everywhere. Hey, the river playground, isn't that one done?
Nope.
The dog water, it looks like they covered the ditch up.
Yeah, Chris just installed that, but I gotta go check it before I take it off the list because I want to make sure it doesn't need some dialing in or rock or.
Make sure it's got the stick of hand on, right?
All the things. Um.
Todd Lotto's done now? Or you have to get a sign?
No, the, um, he moved this stuff. I still have to get their sign off on that. Aaron moved it right at the end of the year. At the end of the school year, so like June.
He's got several right here ready to get.
Is there enough there now that there aren't like the stumps and the log?
No, we still are supposed to, well, we're supposed to put a picnic table up there, which is easy. We'll just take one of the wood ones up. Um, but there is supposed to be one more element there. So Ben and, or Ben, Mitch and Tim had an idea for like a little one. Um, so they have the wood for that stockpiled, but they'll have to finish putting. Yeah, so we just have to, um, double check with the state parks. But that corner, that corner on the road where the sign is, is state parks.
Oh, we're on the state park. Wow.
So if you were gonna move this sign to your property, you'd have to move it after Umatilla.
Oh, wow.
Where the, where the grass that we mow in front of the senior center is, that's where it would be city property. Or the right of way of Umatilla since it's vacated there.
Need permission just to repaint on it?
No, but if we were gonna do like a new sign, then we'd have to engage with them.
The only thing else I wrote down was beautification. I think we're all kind of working that way anyway, the flower baskets and the new wrought iron looks pretty nice. And what else have we done? Murals, yeah.
And Rachel's on another round two of murals.
Oh, I see that.
Trying to get a woman, woman artists ones up, female artists. They're underrepresented, Dale.
Oh, is that right? Were they all males that did the?
They were.
Are they? Oh. Okay, I guess I'll go with the lake bathrooms is on the top six or so here. Is that gonna happen this fall or what's your?
Yeah, that's the plan. I took the years off because the, my notes got all jumbled when I started erasing lines. So I could only do it, but I could put, once you guys formulate the list, I'll put the notes back so you can have that to take into account when I send it to you to re-categorize it.
Are they still in the previous order?
Yes, they're currently just the list, just taking off ones that were completed and just moving Louisiana stuff altogether.
Hopefully by the end of the month, those ADA ramps are off there. I saw they poured the one there.
It's gonna be a few.
Did that, did those pass up here?
Uh, we haven't had the inspection yet. We had Parker come with our engineer and they laid the level and circled all the spots that need to be ground down. And they're coming out with their grinder crew. They have, they're doing their two that they poured and then they're doing ours on an hourly rate for Umatilla because the machine will already be out here, even though.
Got a grind on theirs there.
Yeah.
It's the weirdest thing, the way certain panels.
Paint them in, no, the spec.
Yes, they grind them down to.
They try to hit it, but if they don't, then they grind them in the spec.
Yeah.
Well, wow.
They grind them and they don't get it right.
That's what he's saying.
Yeah, but I think it's pretty darn tough, I think.
Yeah, I mean, there's certain panels that are considered sidewalk and certain panels are considered ramp. And so they have different percentages they can be and like there, some of them are like point two. Right? So it's like, it can be eight, eight point five and it's eight point seven. And, and then if you lay your level down and can do this.
Yeah.
But they require a brush finish. So it's like the brush line could be that teetering and it's the most ridiculous thing, but.
Right, it re-top it, re-broom it.
Yeah, he, uh, Parker said he has a, once he grinds it, he has a finish thing he does, but he doesn't have to skim coat it because that would just be building it up, but they have a process.
Ice to broom.
That's like a roughening of it. Because they don't like smooth either. So we found all the spots and he was coming out and they're gonna grind them all. We'll check them one more time and then we'll invite Odon out to pass because we're done with it. We're frustrated, so.
And we really wouldn't want to bring them out till Spencer's paved up because Spencer isn't, you can't pass it until the paving's in.
Right, it's gotta have the edge abutting curb.
It's gonna be, yeah, for the ramp to work, it's gotta be paved up to it, so.
Yeah, so that's, they're cutting it out today and they have to bring in compacted water and compacted rock up to that edge and then have the paver go over that.
Oh.
That's in the plans. So that's why they were cutting it today.
There is a lot of dust flying around.
Other was.
I opt.
And then we did talk about Robert, the engineer's proposing, which I told him there would be pushback from the neighborhood, that Spencer be a one-way. If, especially if the neighbor across the street won't put up, put back up a dome mirror. Um, you're with the new ramp, you're, you're gonna have to be your nose out there before you can even turn.
Well, and what's really bad too, I'm noticing with that is coming from the east. Because that person has, the person exiting has to get out there and pretty much block it. If I'm coming from the east and I've got somebody behind me and I come up there and there are somebody there, I'm gonna be hard on to the brakes. And you know you're gonna get rear-ended.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's, I seeing that is like, ooh, that's made that far worse.
Well, and it's a really narrow right of way there. It's only like twenty feet.
Oh, that's all the right of way in there?
Yeah, but Actins, you know, Judy on the corner, her vegetation is like seven feet into that.
Yeah.
So you really got thirteen feet of blacktop. And so.
Yeah.
There's some issues without making her just chop her, because hers kind of comes down as a bank, right? Without chopping it, making a retaining wall.
Well, on our transportation master plan, that was, the idea was to make that a one-way street.
Oh, is it? Okay, I didn't remember that.
To right of way out locker and make it a one-way going out.
Oh, that I, now I. No, and I think you're really only gonna make probably Actins, whoever accesses at my old house and the neighbor across the street. Those are the people that are gonna be frustrated by it. But you can make it a one-way and if someone's gonna go against it, you're not, I mean, you're not.
That's your own risk.
Yeah, people go this way right by my window all the time.
Really?
And you're like, that's a one-way. All the cars are. So, but yeah, so there's a lot to.
Correct and they're liable. I gotta go, guys. Turn this over to council where.
You gotta go?
Yeah, I wasn't planning on doing this meeting tonight. The second one. Oh, so. Excuse me, I got a little boy to tuck in.
Okay.
You guys can.
Well, I think we're just both done.
Yes.
They want you to number them or something, maybe.
No, I just want to make sure if there's consensus from you guys, that all of these go on the list or not.
So boat ramps, Anderson in the lake, sidewalk master plan, I N I master plan, water master plan implementation.
You can always.
Then I.
Later.
Well, then I have J R's ads where splash pad part in the parks. Uh, Dewey Pool ADA access and city signs, the entrance, the welcome signs.
But do those go on or do they get sent to the parks for?
That's what I'm kind of.
Well, I think those two definitely we could send to parks right now to chew on. If, if there's consensus of council, that's something you want them to chew on. And the ADA ramp, I think it's just gonna end up in the same place. You can put one in there. You're gonna take up all the hangout space to do it, but.
Hard to believe there's not money somewhere for making that ADA accessible on some grant somewhere.
Well, it's not just the money. The ramp took up the whole area that you sit with all the zigzags.
It just.
The elevator drop and zigzagging it back and forth.
Get the grade.
All that seating.
Yeah, and the, and some of the grass. So that was why they kind of.
Talking about the elevator thing, though.
Yeah, so that's something I think we just send to parks and say, we'd like some sort of ADA capability access at Dewey Pool. Please investigate potential options and.
Solve it.
Yeah.
To the council.
Because maybe they find an elevator lift or a grant for that, or maybe they find a, you know, something you hook onto a wheelchair, you lock it in and then you go down or, I don't know.
Yeah, I think we all kind of agreed on that would be a good option if it was doable.
So are you guys okay if I, if we send Dewey Pool ADA access and splash pad in a park to the Parks Committee and not on the priority list till it comes back to you guys, till back for a decision?
Because they need to peruse it first before.
And then what about welcome signs? You guys, is everyone okay if that?
Yeah, we don't.
stays on, or do we, do you want staff to maybe look at that a little bit more and tell you like what's out there as options of replacement?
Priority, it's just something eventually you're gonna have to deal with if it keeps deteriorating.
That's just.
Well, yeah, I agree. And, and, and can we start the discussion with our community members that, you know, groups, if they want to tackle these projects? Or if that's not gonna happen, then it is gonna fall.
Yeah.
City and.
And maybe in the meantime, we just get paint, new, fresh paint.
Change it and.
Who's we?
Go to the Spencer, hook the electrical.
It'd be Mitch, yeah, probably Mitch. We could just give them a new, you guys could keep, not put it on the list, keep discussing it, but we could freshen them up with some matching the paint, redoing the paint for now until.
Again, it's kind of one of those maintenance things.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I, doesn't need to go on the list unless you guys want like.
Like the light.
Sure, replacement of city welcome signs or something and put it twenty-three, twenty-four or something to talk about it. So are you guys all okay with future welcome signs, water master plan, lake, lake boat ramp, Anderson boat ramp, sidewalk master plan using GIS and all that, and I N I master plan and water plan implementation? Those being added onto the list with notes of when like, hey, this isn't funded or hey.
I'm, I'm good.
So since you're still running the meeting, will you call for a consensus of council so I can put that?
Are you good with that consensus?
Yes.
Yep, we have.
Okay, so Wednesdays, you'll get this list with these proposed projects and the existing projects. I mean, you'll get this before Wednesday to put order in, bring your ordered ones Wednesday and Stephanie is gonna average them, right?
Are you guys actually gonna do it?
Well, Sharice is gonna do it because she has.
Oh, window. I have a ten o'clock flight Wednesday night.
So when you get it tomorrow.
My husband's flared about.
Please amend your order. I'm gonna put the notes on it so you can see kind of, hey, we anticipate the year we anticipate it being done. So maybe you don't put high priority to the ones that are twenty-twenty-two or something.
You can take the one that's in front of you so you're not waiting on the one to be sent to you.
You can take this one, right?
Yes. So, um, well, we have that like tomorrow afternoon.
I like tomorrow morning.
But for some, I know J R's not gonna see his email, so.
Well, you saw.
Well, I'll just, we can.
Some of you guys can't follow the direction.
My brain.
I think I'll.
I need to cut and paste. I'm a visual.
I'll send in the email and then I'll print one. So if you'd like to stop by, grab it, you can put it in order, bring it Wednesday. Does that work?
Yep. Wednesday?
Wednesday's the work session for this?
Okay, we were doing that now.
No.
This is.
They're just, we were just talking about new ones so we can develop a list for you to put in order.
Brett got me confused there. He thought he had to combine the meetings.
No, no, he was confused a little bit. It's COVID.
So by tomorrow, there will be printouts and an email version with everything, or you can just take the five we added tonight.
No, I really don't want them doing that because you're not gonna have the years and the notes on it to show you when this is expected to happen. Your priority might get mixed up.
Yeah, you're gonna send a new one out.
Yeah.
You send to my work email and locked out of the city.
Sure, I'll send it to both.
So you, you do know that sending, using your work email for city business makes a full record, right? That's, I do not send anything to your work email for that exact reason, which I know we're at the end of your term, but I just feel like I need to say that again. That's why I refuse to do it.
Well, let me, I don't know why, but my password stopped working on it again, so I don't know, I don't know why it locked out, so I'll see if I can fix it.
Okay, and I'll have printed versions here too.
Okay.
That happened to me and I came in and Angie fixed it.
Okay.
Yeah, we, you'll get a list some way, but that way it'll have the notes kind of like, don't put this as a hyper priority because it's gonna be finished this coming month or something.
I can just print it out and then just.
Yep. And then you're just gonna number them and bring them Wednesday numbered. And they'll, I'll put it in the email. I'll put it in the staff report that Stephanie will put in the email.
Like a list for each year, but that's maybe too much.
No.
No.
If you would like to take this and make it a list for each year, go for it. If I do that, I might just lose my mind.
Okay, done?
Yep.
Call, call it time.
Close this meeting at eight twenty-five P M.